Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the Thursday, October 16th, 2025 Business Board Meeting. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. The body of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, in the freedom of liberty and justice of our hearts.
The board met in executive session on October 6th regarding personnel for 15 minutes. They also met tonight prior to this meeting to discuss personnel, a special education agreement, Teamsters negotiations, and a union grievance. The meeting lasted approximately 45 minutes. And now, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Christian for some great student recognitions this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Petrucci. We are honored to recognize so many Plymouth-White Marsh students this evening for their achievements in the National Merit Scholarship Program as well as the College Board National Recognition Program. I am happy to welcome Dr. Bakani and Mr. Bryce, as well as all of our students and families so that they can be recognized for their wonderful academic achievements. We have so much to be proud of. Dr. Bakani, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Dr. Christian, Colonial School Board and Directors and Cabinet Members and Family Members. Thank you for being here, having us here this evening to highlight just an amazing group of students for their academic accomplishments. I think it's the longest line. I think you can see that's wrapping around that we've had so many students to celebrate based upon their academic achievements, and we're so proud of our students and our staff. We've had several highlights to celebrate this fall. It's been an amazing start to the school year at Plymouth-White Marsh High School, in particular in terms of student achievement. And I'm fortunate to be here to share the terrific news with the members of the school board. Our first group of students is being recognized for their achievements in the National Merit Scholarship Program. We have our commended students who are among the top 34,000 highest-scoring students on the PSATs. I'd like to call them forward and congratulate them. Ladvar Harun, congratulations. We have four not in attendance. We have some busy students. We have a trip, orchestra trip, musical to New York. We have student athletes, kids working. I'd like to recognize Maya Baba, who's not here, Caleb Cleveland, Mai Tai Haio, and Noorani Sakthanathan, who's not here as well, and I want to recognize them for their achievements. In addition to the commended students, we celebrate the accomplishments of those seniors who achieved the semifinal status in the program. Three of our seniors advanced to this level and joined an elite group of representing less than 1% of U.S. high school seniors. We have three to in attendance this evening. I'd like to call them forward. We have Madison Lee. And Aiden Robinett. And we have a third not present this evening. I'd like to recognize him, Zachary Halbert, and congratulate all of our students that are semifinalists and wish them luck on the next step with the National Merit Programs. And once again, congratulations. Next, we'd like to honor students who received the College Board National Recognition Program Award. To receive the recognition award, eligible students must, number one, score in the top 10% of the PSAT, 10 test takers in high school, be a state's first-generation test taker and/or state's rural and small-town test taker, or earn a 3 or higher on two AP exams. In addition to that, students must do really well in the classroom and average a B+ or above at the time of submission in terms of their cumulative GPA. Many students are recognized to my right, as you can see, and we're so proud to introduce them. The first one is Austin Aldifer, school recognition award winner. We have Patrick Aloya Ramos, recognition award winner, first-generation recognition award winner, too. Congratulations. We have Miriam Alsamik, a school recognition award winner. Lyndy Arnold, recognition award. Eric Babka, recognition award. Hollis Becker, another recognition award winner. Justin Bischoff, recognition award winner. Robert Blunt, rec. winner. That's right, Robert's not here. Well, I want to recognize Robert, who's not here this evening. Unable to make it, but an award winner. Way from the football field, Michael Bongard. Come on up. Michael Bonner, who's a first-generation recognition winner. Another first-generation recognition winner, Ronan Breen. A little shout-out, Ron. Melody Byun, a recognition award winner as well. Owen Kabab, another recognition award winner. Alexandra Frangiosa, who's a recognition award winner. Congrats, Alexander. Straight from the volleyball court, Grace Hamilton, one of our recognition award winners. Ladvar Harun was already recognized as a National Merit, but she's also a recognition winner. I want to recognize her as well. Congratulations, Ladvar. Kate Jones, first-generation recognition award winner, who's not here this evening. Sean Lindsey, first-generation recognition award winner and school recognition program Spencer Long, recognition award winner. Lorena Lopez, another recognition award winner. William McGlocklin, recognition award winner. Jamison Malillo, 2027 recognition award winner. Max Montemayor, another recognition award winner. Congratulations, Max. Two hats today as a board rep and award winner, Leo Nasatier. Congratulations. Come on up. Jasmine Ray, school recognition award winner. Nathaniel Rizzo Kim, first-generation recognition award winner and school recognition award winner. Janai Scheth, school recognition award winner. Kaylee Stoffer, school recognition award winner. Congratulations, Kaylee. Gabrielle Tadekhan, school recognition award winner. And getting ready for cross-country tomorrow, which could be the first time in team history that the cross-country team may win a league title. 11 o'clock tomorrow, right? All right, William Ware is also a board rep and school recognition award winner. And we have Hassan Yafei, as well, as a school recognition award winner. And we have multiple students who are not present this evening. There are other commitments. We have, again, busy students that are work with extracurriculars, clubs, as well as a school trip. I'd like to recognize all of them. Again, we are so proud of the students that are here this evening and one that are not present here this evening, their willingness to challenge themselves academically. This year, Plymouth-White Marsh High School, we have the most students that were enrolled in AP classes, as well scored 3 or above in AP classes, in the history of Plymouth-White Marsh High School, which is absolutely amazing. Just a credit, obviously, our families, our students, as well as our staff. So congratulations to all of them. We know that they'll continue to impress us with their contributions to the school as well as the community. I'd also like to add, in addition to this, is that our faculty and staff, a lot of recognition recently, played a role in rankings, our Philadelphia Magazine, local ranking, magazine-ranked PW, the 15th-best high school in Pennsylvania in suburbs, Niche.com, 25th in the state, and U.S. News World Report, 24th, which is such a credit, obviously, to the student staff and the community and the support office and Dr. Christian administration and the school board. And we're looking forward to additional positives and celebrations as we continue the school year. So congratulations, once again, to all of our students, and thank you to all of our families for being here this evening out of the class. So now we have a nice photo. Mrs. Noel can fit all of our students here in the front for a nice group photo. Congratulations, students.
Before our students leave and our families, thank you for coming out this evening. Just a few comments on behalf of the board and the administration. What you see here is the product of diligence, perseverance, hard work. The foundation of any school or school district is based upon student achievement. And while I'm not a graduate of Plymouth-White Marsh, I really wish I was because it is there for the taking at Plymouth-White Marsh High School and in Colonial School District. 30-plus advanced placement courses, international baccalaureate program, comprehensive special education services, a curriculum that is deep and wide with a strong faculty, support staff, families, administration, school board, and, most importantly, students. They are our foundation, and we are so proud of their accomplishments. Congratulations to all of our students and congratulations to you as families. And as much as you would love to stay for the board meeting, you are certainly excused. But thank you for coming out this evening.
All right, to continue with our meeting, this is the motion to approve minutes as presented in items 4B through 4F. May I have a second, please, Rashida? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. This is a motion to approve financial reports as presented in items 5B through 5L for September 2025. May I have a second, please, Sharon? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. This is a motion to approve the September 2025 treasurer's report. May I have a second, please, Rick? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. And now, is there any public comment this evening on any items on our agenda? All right, seeing none, I will turn it over to Dr. Christian.
Thank you, Mrs. Petrucci. Superintendent's report, motion to approve items 8A, B, and C. The superintendent's report, personnel report, and extracurricular contracts. Board action is requested for the recommended personnel changes. Appointments for promotion, employment, or transfer are subject to the presentation of valid credential, employment verification, documentation, and state-mandated requirements.
May I have a second, please? Chris? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. And now, I will turn it over to our student reps. Good evening.
Good evening. For PW, the Plymouth-White Marsh High School Unified Bachi team recently received an invitation from the Special Olympics of Pennsylvania to participate in a bachi event with members of the PHLY Insurance Group. PW celebrates three semifinalists and seven commended students for National Merit Scholarship Program. The high school orchestra had an immersive experience at a behind-the-scenes Lincoln Center tour and Wicked Musical Watching in New York today. A staff and student flash mob serenaded PW's assistant principal, Ms. King, and principal Dr. Bakani, who celebrated their birthday yesterday, October 15th. Colonial Middle School students started off the year with a variety of activities designed to help them acclimate to the school year, establishing positive routines and learn about expectations that help support a positive learning environment. Open house. Parents were afforded an opportunity to meet all teachers, discussing our schedule, expectations, and goals. Administrators and teachers also spoke to families about our goals to address issues related to hate speech and bias. There was a spirit rally on Friday, the 19th. The gym was filled for the spirit rally for each grade level, and color teams participated in competitive activities against one another. A big thank you goes out to Mr. Scott for being an awesome emcee. Colonial spirit was on full display from all students, with an additional focus on collective unity and sportsmanship following a No Place for Hate homeroom activity. The DVCEE Middle School Leadership Summit is on October 17th, or was on October 17th, 2025, when Mr. Leach took a group of students attending the DVCEE Leadership Summit with three student leaders from CMS, Tyler Chang, Olivia Lombardo, and Chase McDowan. Students participated with leaders from other schools in the area to discuss different aspects of leadership, while also hearing from multiple speakers about connecting and communicating with peers and discovering their passion. And best buddies, on Friday, September 12th, the CMS best buddies attended the Phillies game. Everyone had a great time cheering on our team and raising funds for an important cause. For CES, CES Trailblazer Day will be on Thursday, October 30th, and PWHS Boys Basketball will hold night clinics for grades 3 to 7 on October 17th, 24th, and November 7th. For Plymouth Elementary, September 12th was PTO Ice Cream Social with ice cream trucks, Kona Ice, and DJ for families to get to know each other. October 1st through 13th was the Scholastic Book Fair. All students attended during their library classes. Family Book Fair Night was on Wednesday, October 8th. Families had the opportunity to have Kona Ice and shop and purchase books. Third grade has begun chorus and are looking forward to their winter show. Conshohocken Elementary, in October, the third-grade students launched the CE Morning News that is filmed and shared at morning meetings. Thank you to Mrs. Campbell, Mrs. Donovan, and Mrs. Gilbert for developing this awesome student-led activity. Our third-grade students also went to the Conshohocken Community Garden to begin closing the plots. Fire Prevention Week was held the week of October 6th. It included a presentation to learn about and reinforce fire safety from the Conshohocken Fire Department. All students were able to go on a fire truck during recess, and a fire drill was also conducted by the Conshohocken Fire Department. On October 14th, Dostoffo's Karate will be at Conshohocken Elementary for free grade-level workshops, and CE is looking forward to the annual Fall Parade on October 31st, which will be led by the PWHS marching band and cheerleaders. Thank you to PWHS for keeping this great tradition at CE going. CE staff is looking forward to the second annual Great Inflatable Pumpkin Race. For Ridge Park, on Wednesday, September 10th and 17th, Ridge Park held an open house for all Ridge Park families. It was a huge success. There was an outstanding turnout as parents and guardians were eager to meet their child's teachers and learn about the expectations for the school year. With a supportive action karate, students could participate in a karate lesson and provide cost-free childcare while adults met with teachers. Our students learned about Hispanic culture during Hispanic Heritage Month. They read books and participated in activities during morning meetings. We had our school-wide No Place for Hate kickoff. On Friday, October 3rd, White Marsh Elementary hosted our annual Scarecrow Day. Each classroom has the opportunity to choose a theme for their scarecrow and to bring in the accessories that will be used for the scarecrow. Classes then built their own scarecrow that is displayed outside of our school for the month of October. There were so many creative ideas, and everyone enjoyed being creative. On Wednesday, October 8th and Thursday, October 9th, teachers from Dostoffo's Karate held an assembly for individual grade levels to enjoy. During the assembly, students were introduced to how karate can help to build some of the skills that you need to be successful in school. Students enjoyed learning some moves and how to be successful. And that's it for today.
Thank you guys so much. Thank you.
This is a motion to approve the policies outlined below on a second-read basis. Policy 101, Regarding Mission Statement, Vision Statement, and Shared Values. Policy 330, Regarding Overtime. And Policy 702, Regarding Gifts, Grants, and Donations.
May I have a second, please? Will? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Rick?
It's a motion to approve the changes to the policies outlined below on a first-read basis. Policy 237, Electronic Devices. And Policy 616, Payment of Bills.
May I have a second, please? Chris? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
Motion to approve the educational service grievance outlined below for the Martin Luther School, the Vanguard School, and New Hope Academy.
May I have a second, please? Rashida? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
Motion to approve a settlement and release agreement. Due to student confidentiality, this agreement was discussed in executive session.
May I have a second, please? Will? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Sharon?
This is a motion to approve the conference requests as outlined below. Plymouth-White Marsh High School teachers Rebecca Duffy, Bryan Adams, Mary Rems, and Michelle Canning to attend the IBCP workshop Personal and Professional Skills in St. Petersburg, Florida from November 9th through 12th of this year.
May I have a second, please? Rick? Any questions or comments?
These conferences are required for the district and Plymouth-White Marsh High School to maintain its IB certification program.
All in favor?
Motion to approve the PWHS Glamour Gals Club to attend the Glamour Gals Club Leadership Conference in New York City on November 22nd, 2025. There is no cost to the district.
May I have a second, please? Rashida? Any questions or comments? All in favor? And now, is there a solicitor's report this evening?
There is not.
All right, thank you. Curriculum. Sharon?
The Curriculum Committee of the Board met on this past Monday, October 13th, which included a review of the district's text selection process guided by Policies 108 and 109. Mr. Plasey helped outline how classroom libraries are developed in alignment with ALA guidelines with input from literacy teams, administrators, and the curriculum department. Mrs. Burke outlined the district's plans to meet the new Web Content Accessibility Guidelines effective April 24th, 2027, which will mandate that all digital content meet new success criteria to improve accessibility for everyone, particularly individuals with disabilities. Mr. Bogley emphasized that all websites, tools, and communications must meet these standards, including vendor-provided resources and content. A rollout plan is in place, including a, we're going to say WCAG for now, we're figuring out the acronym, Committee Professional Learning, and an ongoing review of district practices. And then we also discussed the conference request that we just approved and the Electronic Devices Policy 237.
Great, thank you. Facilities. Will?
Yes. On October 6th, the Facilities Committee met, and the main goal is to work on a phase of the projects that are all about roofing for all the buildings within the district. That's going to take the next few years, but we want to make sure we put that on everyone's radar. That's it.
Great, thank you. Rick?
Finance Committee met on Monday, October 6th. Brief meeting reviewed Policy 616, voted on a first read tonight. The 2627 budget process and an update on the 2526 budget. We are still waiting on the state to agree to a budget and release state funds for the district, so please encourage your legislators to come to a reasonable conclusion to this
There is no report for human resources this evening. Chris?
No report.
All right. For the tech school. Mark, anything from the IU?
No report.
Thank you. Sharon, legislative?
Just reiterating what Mr. Carpenter said around the budget. Yes, encourage your legislators to make a move and let's make this happen. But also, two other things. Children First was there with us at our last committee meeting, and so we spent some time discussing individual reports that were given to us from PA School Works, which was Schools Work, which was shared with the board. And so that's in your inbox if you're interested in looking into that, specifically related to the need for cyber charter reform, tuition-based cyber charter reform, and basic education funding. There's also a summit that's going to be held in Pennsylvania. As we know, there is a teacher crisis in Pennsylvania, and so this summit is related to Pennsylvania needs teachers' teaching reimagined. So thinking about the workforce and what can shift and what might change in the future to support our educators who are supporting our students and our communities.
Great, thank you. Are there any community reports this evening?
Anybody? Okay, I'll go. So on October 13th, which was this past Monday, at the regular Plymouth Township Council meeting, the council voted to grant a change of zoning to the parcel of land between Plymouth Road and North Graves Lane. I think everyone knows that that's planned to be, you know, a lot of housing there, so we will need to work on a plan for that. Yeah, fun stuff. The next thing is...
We're going to need a bigger boat.
Yeah, I know, right? Yeah. I'm going to sandwich this in, like, you know, with some fun stuff in between, but so also tomorrow, actually not tomorrow, Saturday, there's going to be a campfire and hayride at Harriet Wetherell Park from 7:00 to 8:30. That'll be real fun, bring your kiddos. And then, on Monday, there will be a zoning hearing board, which will be about the proposed data center, changing that zoning from heavy industrial to maybe warehouse or whatever they find. So that'd be an interesting one as well.
Just so the board knows, Mr. Diggin, Mr. Ali, and myself met with the new Plymouth Township manager and discussed the potential for that vote that just took place to change the zoning for more housing over by Plymouth Elementary, sort of sandwiched between Plymouth Elementary and Ridge Park, probably closer to Plymouth. It's our understanding, based on that conversation, that the earliest we would see actually homes sold would be in 2027. So we will, we really appreciate the township communicating with us so that we can plan appropriately. So we won't have it ready for November, but in the springtime, we'll meet again with Plymouth, talk about the number of houses, and factor that into our enrollment projections and what our plan for that... our plan for that would be. So we'll have a plan ready, and we'll be ready to accept students when they get here, but we do have a little bit of time.
Is there an estimated range of the number of houses?
I believe it was in the 140 to 160? 149? Townhomes, correct? And a lot, I mean, right now, they just got approval to change the zoning, so things could change, so we don't want to lock in on a number. But, you know, we, with our housing starts and our enrollment projections, we can calculate at least an estimate of how many students that would create K to 12. And then we'll take, obviously, it would impact either Plymouth or Ridge Park or both, based upon the approximate location of the houses. I do find it kind of amazing that some of the developers just sort of assume where everybody would go, and no developer has called us to ask us where the kids would attend school, but, you know, we'll deal with that. You know, we'll be ready to go when the time calls.
One more question, sorry. When they talk about new housing, what do you kind of average per household, like, in the K to 12?
Depends upon whether it is a apartment, townhome, or a single-family home. So I don't want to misspeak, Chris. Generally, for a townhome, depending upon the service that you use, it could be like .8 to 1.2 students per townhome, which I know there's not a .8 of a student. It's an average. Single-family homes produce a little bit more, and that is off-the-cuff remark. I'd have to go back and look at the formulas. But generally speaking, when you're talking about apartments and townhomes, they're starter homes for folks. So by the time a second or third child arrives, those families often look for a single-family home with more space, so.
Thank you.
That's a general, very, very general rule of thumb. So it could produce 40, 50, 60 students, but, you know, that's just a general estimate. Yep.
Just regarding, also, update, Contra Hockin is having their Halloween parade this Saturday from 4:00 to 6:00 at Marywood Park, if anyone's interested. And I think Rick had something.
White Marsh Township has a busy fall full of Halloween activities, including hayrides and other trunk-or-treat events. They're all on the whitemarshtp.org website. You can find them there, and going straight through the fall, or straight through the winter, where there will be a Holiday Lights competition as well.
I just want to give a shout out for the Halloween parade down at Contra Hockin Elementary. If you get a chance on the 31st to go down there, it is a really cool event to see the marching band leading all these kids around the building, and they have a little, actually a little demonstration after the parade where the band plays some things, and they talk to the kids about the different instruments, and it's a really, really fun day. And also, the Contra Hockin, the kids that are at the high school that went to Contra Hockin, it's always nice for them to go back and visit their sending school. So just put it out there, if you have a chance in the morning to kind of walk by.
I've been there several times, and I would agree, it's a great event.
All right, anything else from any of the foundations? All right, Jeremy, foundation, great foundation day.
Yeah, thank you to everybody who came out two Sundays ago for Foundation Day. It was a very successful day. Hope to have some, you know, financial results at some point, and just encourage everybody as they consider their year-end planning to think about the foundation. Again, all money contributed to the foundation goes back to students and programs that are part of Colonial.
Great, thank you. Attached to this evening's agenda for your information is the school activity accounts for CMS and PW, the athletic activity accounts for CMS and PW, building report, curriculum report, and a technology report. And now, are there any public comments this evening? Any other board comments this evening?
Just a quick one. Congratulations to all the fall sports teams that have wrapped up their seasons. Good luck to those going off to postseason tournaments, and I'm just really excited this year. I think a lot more teams have been doing community days with the youth and seen a couple of those. You know, there was that one on Monday in the pouring rain, it was still packed. So it's really fun to see just the different levels and joking that I'm like, I can get you that kid, that varsity kid's autograph.
Anything else this evening? All right, seeing none, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you so much.